They're not across town, they're not everywhere. So these are issues that the city and us, we all need to address, that each and every one of us, not just, not just the city. So, and the other one is... Yeah? The last train of thought then. What was your question?
Housing, you said housing.
Housing.
Housing addiction, mental health.
Was just the question I was asking for your question right now. What do you see as some of the issues faced by Wilson County?
Okay, well, yeah, oh, you can do one at a time.
Yes, one at a time.
That's what it was, that was the housing and the, uh, and the drug addiction and, uh, and the private housing. I mean, that's just, it's, it's just out of control. So those are things that we definitely need to address, and that should be a priority with the housing and the drug addiction and, uh, health in, in Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Gillettean Morgan, I am the current council representative of District One, and the things that I see that are issues in our community would be, as Mr. Doo said, the housing, affordable housing, the drug epidemic, and also the homelessness. And to tackle that, it will take the city and the county and all of you, because we can't do it all alone. Um, as far as affordable housing, there's a process that's going on with that. We have new places coming, we have a central project that's underway. Um, there'll be a Penn and Street project coming up soon, forty-eight affordable, um, units for people to, to rent. And the drug epidemic, um, the main thing first, I'm gonna be the drug officer. So that's gonna take law enforcement. And then after that, for those that are addicted to it, to make sure that there are programs available for these people so that they could, um, go into rehab and better, um, serve themselves and our community, because when we lose one, we've lost all.
How you doing, everybody? Come out, Alex Simmons, running District One. And I think one of the main things, um, about everything I've heard tonight could be information, because what's gonna happen is, when you're looking for affordable housing, when you're looking to get people off of drugs, when you're looking to do things to keep people going up, they need the information. It needs to be presented and given, given to them the right way. So, um, the main thing is, is to have the right people in place that they can talk to, that they can, you can have all the problems in the world, but if you don't have the right people to talk to, that you can relate to, you won't get help, you won't want that. So again, I think we gotta be able to make, with this one, when it comes to affordable housing for the elderly and, you know, for the regular people, because if you have affordable housing, you still wanna keep going up. You wanna teach them how to go up now, how to get a house, how to, you know, come off of those decisions. So the information is always gonna be valuable from the top and coming back down.
Mr. Simmons will continue with you for the second question. Go ahead. Tell us the experience you have that makes you the best candidate for this office.
Well, you know, I think, you know, the best thing I could say is being able to, you know, drive a business in this community firsthand, to see the community work together with me personally and my business to grow it throughout these years, um, you know, is the biggest thing possible, because I was able to put up a barbershop in a community where there were fifteen, twenty other barbershops, where everyone's saying, "No, this is ready a shop, why are you doing that? That's not a good idea." I was able to bring different services that are already here, but no one wanted to do. I do all the jobs that no one wants to do. No one wants to watch here. No one wants to bring, you know, the kid in the shop that's crying and take the time with him. So again, to, to, to talk about community, you know, I am community when it comes to that. You know, um, I'm firsthand that guy on the front line with everybody, no matter the race, that comes to, to my shop, you know, everyone is treated right and in a fair way.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Tell us the experience you have that makes you the best candidate for this office.
Um, the first thing that probably makes me a really good candidate is that I've already had four years in the office. Um, I've worked very hard the past four years. I've demonstrated integrity, honesty, transparency, and accountability. And I wanna continue to be the voice for District One, as well as representing diversity on council. I am the only woman on council, and I think it's very important that women be at the table, no matter where the table is, because when women win, we all win.
Okay, I look at it as, uh, since two thousand and seven, I've been involved in Wilson politics. I've been up and down the street. I've tried helping people, I've tried getting things going within the council. I go to the city council meetings on a regular basis. So I'm pretty much up on what is going on as far as politics here in Wilson. And I'm a, I'm a free thinker. I don't think along with everybody else. I read and do my own research and come to my own conclusions. And once I come to that conclusion, that's where I am. And the only way that I will change is if somebody can show me and prove to me that what I'm, what my decision was on that is, is not correct. So I've been doing this for, for a long time. I've been to the, uh, been on board of the Economic Development Council. I went to the school of, uh, the Rural Economic Development Institute, I went to that. So I've, I've been into politics and I've done a lot of things, and I've met a lot of people, and I've listened to a lot of people on a lot of things, so that, that, that gives, uh, it gives me a lot of experience and a lot of opportunities to, to actually grow and understand a little bit better.
Thank you. Now please welcome our moderator, Tori Friedman, to the vote.
Good evening. It's great to see such a good turnout, and definitely have lots of public interest evidenced by this stack of questions. We're gonna try to get to as many as possible. The city of Wilson has proposed a six-acre site near the Wallace Simpson Worldy Big Park to develop a baseball stadium and a football complex for the Carolina Mudcats. Do you think the team's presence would be a game changer for downtown Wilson? Please share your thoughts on the Mudcat Stadium project, starting with you.
Okay, well, there again shows transparency, because there's nothing, nothing is on, has been signed on the dotted line that the Mudcats are coming. So if Wilson is working to get 'em here, that's fine. I think that that would be a good idea to have, you know, a team here, but, but we already had a team here. So what is it that we, that we do to just throw away what was already here and thriving and helping the community to begin with? Why don't we throw that away for something new? You know, that can be done. And the transparency, I mean, I don't know, they, they're doing things, they're buying businesses, they're moving people around, they're building a parking lot, and all of that, getting ready to build a stadium. I don't see spending taxpayer money to do these things until you have a signed contract on the line saying that this is what is coming, this is what's gonna happen. Other than that, you're just throwing money away, building those things. But what if they decide fifty thousand people, population is not big enough to be able to maintain a semi-pro team? Then what you gonna do, you know, spend all this money? So, I support it, but there we need a little bit more transparency about it. We need to know just where it is. I don't think we need to keep spending money until we are something that's signed on the dotted line.
And Ms. Morgan, if you could please share your thoughts on the Mudcat Stadium project.
My thoughts on the Mudcat Stadium is that if it comes to fruition, it'll be a good economic investment for, for the city. And the idea, just in general conversation, is for the stadium to pretty much pay for itself. We are not interested in just taking taxpayer dollars to, to fund this. And if the deal does not come through, and we don't know if it is, and if they decide they wanna do it, we still have to look at all the pieces of it, the cost of it, um, all the other components that go into building a stadium of that magnitude. And the things that are going on now, you know, some things are just infrastructure things that we need to do anyway. So, um, when the good stuff comes to us, if it's good, we'll look at it. I wouldn't want everyone to vote for something that's not gonna be good for our city, because I wanna leave the city better than I've ever been.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, same question.
Sir, opportunity before we leave here in Wilson, the stadium is just that, you know, you have, um, young people, you have older people, you could talk about jobs here. So the stadium could, could definitely be something that's positive for a lot of young people and older people that don't have good jobs or, you know, jobs in general. To be active and to, for it to be something that's, as in sports, that people are actually dealing in Wilson, could actually be big for us. Opportunity is everything. And we do have a stadium already, um, but again, we talk of location. Downtown is where the big, the big towns are putting their stadiums, and that's where the tourism comes from, and that's how the town works.
Thank you. And as we alternate back and forth, you'll also be the first person to answer our next question. Uh, the Walgreens on Highway three oh one is once again in peril. I believe it's scheduled to close next Wednesday, October the eleventh. Uh, what is the city doing to retain vital businesses in that area?
Well, um, to be honest, I would notice, I'm not in the city, you know, right now, but again, I think the main thing with that is, we can't keep anything that's not thriving, you know? We want it open, but there's no way for them to keep their doors open, because they're not making money. So with that being said, things like that, when I obtain a seat like this, you know, I'll be the guy that's getting these businesses, whether it's, it's lower end, black owned, whether it's minority owned, there are a bunch of pharmacies, there are a bunch of people that are willing to come and not really take risks, because when you have people needing their medicine, they'll get it. It's that this is a huge building. So again, I think, you know, the main thing is, is to be able to get the entrepreneurs to understand that District One can grow and it will grow again. So we have to be the first ones to do it and take the stand to get these businesses back over there. And the ones that are, like this one, the Walgreens is huge, so again, you can't keep anything open and people are not patronizing that, it's just not gonna work for. But we have to, you know, put the right things in place, and it's, it's more so independent businesses right now on District One. We gotta drive it, we gotta get people to understand that this is our town, we're supposed to actually be opening businesses. We're supposed to actually be encouraging other people to do it, you know? And it's hard sometimes, I get it, when you work a job for twenty, thirty years, you don't get it. Sometimes we don't think it can happen, but you know, when you get the right people in place again, you gonna find the right people to bring back. The city does it all the time, I hear a million stories. Everything we got here came from somewhere else, and you know, it, it doesn't stop there with the district. We have to handpick our district and take care of it. District One is actually, um, you know, really near and dear to me, because when I first came, moved here, that's where I lived at, and that's where I live now. So to see it the way it is, I know it can be better, and we have to make it better with the jobs we create ourselves and the jobs that the city can't bring there. But the people, again, we have to get collectively to understand what's needed in the area. We can't just put businesses up that are not gonna thrive. We have to put things that we need and we're gonna patronize.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Morgan, what can the city do to retain vital businesses like Walgreens in City Wilson?
Well, when it comes to, um, the Walgreens, we tried to save it before, a couple of years ago, and, um, one of the reasons that it was in trouble was because of the foot traffic, that things, people want more global, mobile, and people are doing that, and, um, we have to patronize the business. And we've not done that, I live in District One, I patronized the store, but, um, it takes more than one person. Also, you know, we're already in, in talks with Walgreens. They're supposed to close, we don't know definitely that it's gonna close on the eleventh, but, um, if they do, we're, I'm already talking with the city manager and the city staff about the next step and the legality of trying to bring, um, new opportunities to that, to, um, that location. So when it closes, we're not just gonna stop there, we're gonna try to find something else to go there.
Thank you. And Mr. Doo, same question.
Yeah, I'm gonna move. Okay. Okay. Well, I said, I, I'm, I'm not privy to what the city is doing or what they have, but for me as an individual and as a person seeking to see, if Walgreens closes, it's gonna be devastating for that community, whether they, they saying it's being patronized or not. There are still people who still go there, there are still people who buy their drugs from there. And now they're gonna have to, if they close, they're gonna have to find another way to go across town or to go someplace else to, to get their drugs. So the thing is, you need, she, she said it, but you need a contingency claim. If they do decide to close, you have to go back and look at the, the leasing contract, because the land probably don't belong to them. So you look at the leasing contract, you get somebody to understand what that lease says, and if at all possible, if there's a way around that lease to put something else in there, then let's do that. Let's find individuals, let's find some, some entrepreneurs or somebody that has licenses to sell pharmacies and, and put them in that store. Work with it. You spend money to move companies or to move businesses from one place to another so that you can do what you want to do. So what's wrong with finding somebody or training somebody that can do what needs to be done there at that Walgreens? You go in that store, even if you have to split the store in half, and you just add for the pharmacy and the other half for something else, find another business or, or make it an office complex, anything, but keep the pharmacy open. That's the main thing, because we have these other people who don't have it. And if you look back, when they did the title grant years ago, they looked at how many people in that area had transportation. And that was one of the main reasons that the title grant went through, because people didn't have the transportation. So they put sidewalks there for people to ride bicycles to their workforce places.
Thank you. I believe I heard the buzzer, but you will be the first to get our next question, so you could just combine those responses if you'd like. Our next question is, what plans or vision do you have regarding the restoration of Vic Cemetery?
Okay. Vic Cemetery. I don't think that they did, they did the ground penetration, I don't think they went far enough. And, you know, people may not understand me for saying this, but this is me, and I mean, this is what I have to do. I have to be who I am. But for me, going back and forth with the city on doing what's right, is a waste of time. Why would we have to go back and forth with the city when the city, to begin with, did what they did and they knew, they knew it was illegal to move a headstone? But they did anyway. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, there is one person that's, that was on the council during that time, and I don't know who the attorney was at that time, but that should never have happened, what they did at Vic Cemetery. And then even after that, they went and put the big holes, and that's not, you know, you, you, they desecrated another garden, putting those big transmission holes there. So they knew to begin with what they were doing was wrong. So my thing is, whatever it takes, whatever amount of money it takes, don't partner with this, don't give it to the cemetery commission, because they've already proved that they can't handle money. Give it to the Lane Street Project, partner with them and, and have a better understanding of what it is that they see can be done in that cemetery. And let them do what needs to be done in that cemetery. Take your hands off from the city, just, all you have to do is just be the first string to be able to get that done, and that's, that's just it, there's no way. And if it was me, if I wasn't running for city council, the first thing that I would do if I was head of the, of the Lane Street Project, after going through all this, first thing I would do is get me an attorney, because they knew they did something illegal to begin.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Morgan, what plans or vision do you have regarding the restoration of Vic Cemetery?
Well, first of all, I'd like to, um, say that Ms. Henderson has done an outstanding job of researching and educating us about Vic Cemetery, because initially I did not know anything in regards to all the history of it, so I wanna thank her for that. And also, she also brought to our attention the wrongdoings of, of city staff at that time. It's my desire, as well as council, to come to an amicable resolution in regards to the cemetery. There are pieces that are not in place or that we don't know about. Also, um, Ms. Henderson has requested that we not rush in to make a decision about the cemetery, that we continue to talk about it with her and just a couple of her people that are on her committee to help make this thing work out, because we can't go back and recreate, um, documents that appear or may not appear to have been there. There are a lot of things that we, we just don't know, there's some gray areas and we've, we've questioned, but they're just not there. So the documents aren't there, and I'm thinking about the time of year, the time it was, nineteen thirteen, nineteen ten to nineteen sixty, a lot of things were not, um, documented properly. And I don't feel like the, um, staff of the city did something about this. People were instructed to do things that they did, um, in hindsight. Now, we probably could've, we could've done better, and I apologize for that, it wasn't part of me, but now I'm in this seat, I have responsibility to it, because District One is where I live, I'm right around the corner from Vic Cemetery, so I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution and resolve it, we just can't go back, um, in time and fix what was wrong. We just have to move forward from where we are.
Thank you. And Mr. Simmons, same question on Vic Cemetery.
Yeah, um, first off, you know, I think it's very important to the history and heritage of Wilson, me learning about the cemetery. So first off, you know, with knowing everything that these two said, you know, the, the town knows that a lot of wrong was done. So to answer the question, you know, they see how loud too, you know, to, um, not let that go, you know, meaning it has to be, it has to be addressed. These things at the cemetery have to, um, come to an end, so to speak. And when we say end, we know it's ongoing, these things have to be maintained. So we need people who definitely care for one, and we need to actually get things in place, which is the city, I'm sure, I'll push things in, so the person who takes this seat again or takes this seat needs to understand and just have that care to, to push forward with this project, because it is something that, that's real dear to the town, it's dear to the ancestors. You know, even me, working downtown, these very people that are buried in those graves are people who are walking the same streets we are, doing the same things, living in some of the prominent, prominent minorities, you know, to the town has to also, we have to look after them. They're not here, we are here, and that is something that I will, that we make a part of, um, one of my, our goals.
Thank you. And you are also the, uh, first to receive our next question. What specific measures do you propose to address affordable housing and homelessness in our district?
Well, you know, it's head-on. Um, originally from a big city, you know, where we have to, you have to take care of the homeless, you know, and the elderly, both. I think, you know, sometimes the misfortune, you know, sometimes getting bad under the stick and we think that, you know, we don't, we're not supposed to help some people, but that's not it. And I think we definitely need to put things in place, um, whether it's the shelters, you know, the foundations, there are people out there ready that go around helping people I know personally. These people need to be sought, they need to be found, and they need to be maximized. With the help they put in already, they need to get more aid so that they can actually put in place things for the homeless people. The elderly, of course, you know, we got the Penn and Street Project coming, but there are only a, a number of units that are gonna be available. You still got people that are gonna need places to stay. So again, we need more programs, we need financial literacy to get our people on point, to get our people understanding what money is, how to move it, how to use it. Okay? And the main thing is, um, just us coming together and giving information back, because it's all there now, to be honest with you. We got the dilapidated houses all in my district, everywhere, and they're a program. They are funded programs, there are loans that you can get. And people don't know, because a lot is knocked down, guys. A lot has to stay down for everybody to understand that these things are for everyone to take advantage of. And those are the type of things, again, that I will, I will, I will make part of my goal, to get everybody understood on education on how to drive to get to the next level.
Thank you. And Ms. Morgan, what specific measures do you propose to address affordable housing and homelessness in our district?
As far as affordable housing, um, there are grants out there that the city continuously seeks that, um, we can build, but we're not an entitlement city. And what that means is that we don't have the funding that maybe Rocky Mountain, or people are always saying, you're not doing Rocky Mountain, or what Goldsboro is doing. Um, those are the things that we have to spend city dollars to try to do, and I am an advocate for affordable housing. The homelessness piece, I mean, they got different levels to homelessness. You have people that, um, are sleeping on couch to couch, or you have people that are, um, sleeping on the street. So it, it'll take a collective, collective effort of the county, the city, and any programs. And you're right, literacy is very important. And the city has had programs where people can go through to find out about cleaning up their credit, having a house built, and any most avenues that you're interested in, there is a, um, there is information forward. And the city website has a lot of good information, and if anybody is in my district, you don't have to be in my district, if you have a question about something, a concern about something, my number's out there, I have a, I have a number just for, um, you all to, to contact me. So if you don't tell me what you wanna see, or what, I know, I can see what's going on, but there are other things, because everybody has something they think they want done in, in their, in their district. So communicate with me, and I don't have a problem communicating with you. And thus far, anyone that's contacted me in regards to an issue, I've handled it.
Thank you. And Mr. Doo, what are your proposals to address affordable housing and homelessness in District One?
Okay, well, to begin with, affordable housing, it's, it's, it's a lot to affordable housing, and it's more to it than people really kind of look at. But affordable housing, by HUD standard, you can't use the thirty percent of the gross income, and that is for the rent or the mortgage payment and utilities, they have to be combined. I don't know of any true affordable housing projects that are going on in Wilson. The, most of the houses and stuff that they are building, the apartments they are building, they are high. People that are, if you speak Wilson Woods, they're being, they're leaving because the rent has gone up. So where is affordable housing at? What is affordable housing? What's affordable for one person may not be affordable for another. So what we have to do is to better understand where people are working, how much they are making, how much they're having to spend, because there's all kinds of things that goes on. You know, you got childcare, you got everything. So we can't just say affordable housing without putting a piece together to help people understand how to, to manage their money and how to make sure that what they're getting is affordable. Don't go, don't go over your budget, you know? Don't go into these substandard houses that they have, because the rent is a little bit cheaper. Those are the things that need to be fixed. Affordable housing, the city has, have torn down dilapidated houses, and they've left those lots empty. So why not take those empty lots that's sitting around doing nothing? Find these entrepreneurs that need jobs and say, "Look, we have this, can you do that? And let's get it done." Build these houses that's affordable and make sure that, that the houses that you build are also to take care of the homeless, because you can get money to take care of the homeless. Instead of building a shelter, why not put them in a home? Teach them how to work to maintain their house.
Thank you. And Mr. Doo, you also received our next question. Logging is currently taking place and lumber being stored on Pender Street in a residential neighborhood. Should such activity be allowed and how can it be resolved?
No, just, it should not have, it should never have happened. And the only way to resolve it is to tell the people to move this stuff out and don't talk about no thirty days, no ninety days, no nothing. You move this stuff out within the next forty-eight hours, or for every day that you are there, you'll be fine. That's the only way you're gonna do it. You can't, you, you can't just tell people that they gotta go because they're doing something wrong, especially in our neighborhood. We can't, we can't continue to do that, and that's what's happening. People do things in our neighborhood and that it's wrong, the city catches it, the city does things about it. But you, you can't just say, "You got ninety days," you can't say, "You got thirty days," because they knew when they put it there it was wrong, the city know it's wrong. So why would I allow them to stay in my neighborhood for thirty more days and make thirty more days worth of money when they shouldn't be there? Take that stuff, get it out of here and put it where it belongs.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Uh, logging is currently taking place and being stored on Pender Street in a residential neighborhood. Should such activity be allowed and how can it be resolved?
The activity shouldn't be allowed. Um, I happened to receive that information, um, what the constituents called about it. Um, I turned it in, they had already, uh, wrote the people, telling them that they had, they cannot have that kind of activity on, on that street. And they claimed they did not receive the letter, then it went out again. And we can't just say, "Take it down today, take it down this week." Everything has a legality to it, you hit, the process has to play out. They did move the logs from there, and, um, that situation has been hit.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, how do you think, uh, logging or commercial activity in a residential neighborhood should be handled?
I definitely think it should be handled accordingly, you know, it's zones are the zones, if nothing's zone, it's not zone for its set business, and of course, it shouldn't be in there. And, you know, things should be done, so I like the councilman explaining, if it was handled, I'm sure it was because it wasn't zone, and different things. If it was handled, I'm sure it was because it wasn't zone, and different things, you know, have to be a bye-bye. So I definitely think anything the citizens are not aware of in the area, it's just like anything else. If they wanted to get it zone, then they could have taken to the right places and the right, um, proper channels to, to do that. So, you know, I definitely think if it's not zone for it, then of course, you know, right things are gonna happen for the movie.
Thank you, and Mr. Simmons will also receive our next question. The City of Wilson records council meetings for broadcast on its green light government access channel and online viewing. Because of a policy the council adopted more than a decade ago, the videos don't include the public comments session of each meeting. Do you feel like this sends the wrong message about citizen participation? Why or why not?
Yes, well, that's a good question, I've been to a few meetings, and, you know, I think it is touchy what it does, because, you know, you have to where when you go and you wanna speak, you can write, you know, your name down and you can go up and speak, but sometimes people can't make it to these meetings, and online is the only point of return sometimes. You got people now tonight, I'm sure, hundreds of them watching these meetings, and, you know, sometimes the comments are everything. Comments are where you get the bulk of your, your problems, comments are where you get to the bottom of things. So I do think, you know, sometimes people don't wanna hear them, but the comments are there, they're there all the time. I'm a public figure, so I get it all the time, whether it's with, you know, business or personal, people are gonna have their opinion. But to get down to different things, you gotta be able to let people speak collectively and freely.
Thank you, and same question for Ms. Morgan. Uh, do you support the council's current policy of excluding the public comments from the city's broadcast and videos?
I do support the, the current, um, policy that they have, and, and the reason why, the explanation that I received is that when they were open and everybody could see it, sometimes you would have the audience that would, um, kind of get out of hand and then get the wrong information. When they come up there, I guess a bed lamp will go to where we grandstanding. But when the public comes to the city council meeting, they're receiving information that we're putting out, and we're also receiving what they want. They're asking us questions, they're talking to, to the council, so if it's closed, um, they're talking to us and then we can respond. If it comes up that the policy needs to be changed and they agree to be changed, then I support.
Thank you, and the same question for Mr. Dooley. And if we could ask him, like, along, um, I just wanna make sure that we're not obviouls.
Well, no, I, I, I don't agree with that current policy. It never should have been put in place, because if you think about it, what it is, is sanctioned. They are not allowing the public to speak to the public, and that is, that, that, that's just simple. If you're gonna show the council meeting, then at, at the point when somebody else comes up to talk, why would you take them off of that? If anything, if, if you're gonna do that, then you may well not even broadcast a council meeting at all. Because it's only fair that people come and talk, and everybody else that sits there and cannot go will be, will have the opportunity to see, to hear, because what people bring to the council may be some of their same issues. But they'll never know, you'll never know. And, you know, back then, when the council decided to do that, back then, to show you, I've been in this, this game for a while. The reason was, at one time, because there were elderly people who did not want to be seen on TV. That's what, one, that was one of the excuses. But the real reason was because there was so much going on at the council. There were so many people pushing back against the council that they decided to not broadcast the people speaking, because it, it gave an uproar to the citizens, because they heard people pushing back to the council. So therefore, if you pushing back, and if I don't let nobody hear you push back, then I, I'm not worried about it, because you're just that one person. But if, if everybody that can hear it can hear it, and you're pushing back on an issue, then that person may say, okay, that's my issue too. No, we're gonna get this right, we let this go.
Thank you, and you'll also receive our next question. If elected, what proposals will you put forth toward the redevelopment of East and Southeast Wilson?
Well, you know, that's, there has been no development in East Wilson, there's been no buildings in East Wilson in decades. The city's coming out with a twenty forty-three comprehensive plan, and within that plan, it talks about protecting certain lands. And certain lands that they're talking about protecting, if you, the way I see it, is pushing East Wilson out. We can't build any subdivisions in East Wilson. We can't put any true businesses in East Wilson, because most of everything that's in East Wilson is houses. The industrial places, they're still there, so it'll be hard. So what you have to do, and what I would get, propose that I would put together, would be to do what they did when they went west. Buy up the farmlands, start bringing businesses, start bringing stuff out that way and push it out. I don't want to hear nothing about, you can't make businesses go where they don't want to go. The question is, why do you not want to go there? And once you ask that question, when they tell you why they don't want to go there, then it will be to the city to fix that problem so businesses can continue to go there, so that East Wilson can start thriving again, so East Wilson can start growing again. So that's the only way you're gonna do it, is to invest, and the city has it on, on paper. That you have to, the city has to invest in an area in order to get private investors to invest. Because a private investor is not gonna invest if the city's not investing, because they're gonna imply the city's not investing in your own, I'm not going out there because the city's not investing. So we have to invest in East Wilson regardless of what the investment is, if it's a house, if it's a building, or whatever. We need to start investing in East Wilson so we can bring some private investors to do the same.
Thank you, and Ms. Morgan, what proposals would you put forward, uh, to redevelop East and Southeast Wilson?
Well, the first thing would be to get reelected, but, um, with the new, with the, what he's, I agree with Mr. Ricardo in regards to investing, economic development is important, and he said that he would not wanna hear about what they can and cannot do. But location is very important, and that's why we're fighting, trying to keep wall breaks, because if we lose wall breaks, then what business would say, how much I'm gonna come over there for if we can't keep the wall breaks open? And wall breaks is essential and is vital to our community, and for anyone to think that it's okay, you, Wilson is not unique to it, um, it's happened all over the United States, and so we're trying our best, you know, to negotiate with them. We don't know yet exactly what their intentions are, but we have a, a plan B that we're trying to work on. And as far as, um, housing, we are, in my, in District One, is mostly industrial. If you look at the map, you see that it's, it's mostly in, in industrial. So it's gonna be a challenge to get businesses there, affordable housing there, and things is gonna make us grow, but I'm an advocate because I love Wilson, I've been in District One my entire life.
Thank you, and Mr. Simmons, same question. Uh, redevelopment of East and Southeast Wilson, how would you propose that be accomplished?
Well, um, just like everything else in, in Wilson right now, and what's happening is the value has drifted, of course, to the other side of town. So in order to get the value back to East Wilson, we have to, the city has to put these programs in place to talk to the people, let people know, hey, this is what I'm gonna do, this is what we're gonna do, to get the economy back. It has to come back, it is now, so it's gonna need stimulation, it's gonna need people to understand, you know, that we're gonna have to work together. The right people with the right businesses are gonna need help, because you can't just come into an area where there's no money and it's not viable. So the same way we thrive the downtown area, District One has to be vibe the same way. It has to be flooded, it has to be nourished by the people, for one, the people that live there, and then the town itself, of course. The town itself is, is District One, yes, but we act like it's so secluded, it's not. The people in it and the town itself can thrive this, this, this Wilson, and we have to do it together. So again, we have to put programs in place so that the economy gets back, so that people can understand, hey, yeah, you can rent this for six months for this, and then, you know, you can get leeway to start your business, to begin your dream. And that's what that side of town is gonna be for, I can see it, you know, it's for people to start off. You can move later on, five years, you can have a success and move, but this is the time where people, it's just like, um, you know, after the recession, this is the time for people to come step up and bring more, not just their ideas, but put their money into play, so that that side of town can work, because it's there for the taking, it's there, it's time for people to see it and to move on.
Thank you, and Mr. Simmons will also receive our next question. Are you in support of upgrading the Reed Street Recreation Center?
Man, Reed Street is a good thing, man, you know, um, they just put some money into what I see. I've been going there for years with my kids, you know, they, they go there all the time, so I support anything Reed Street, you know, um. You have different programs around town, which is, you know, great, but Reed Street is District One community, it's outside of it, but it is the District One, pitch, ride, device there. Some people can't make it to the big facilities, so I do support Reed Street.
Thank you, and Ms. Morgan, um, do you believe there's any, um, upgrades or renovations needed to the Reed Street Center?
Yes, I do. Um, they received a one point nine million dollar, um, grant to, to upgrade, so they're gonna upgrade the courts. They're gonna add some outside things, because you have to bring it up to date to others in other cities, and that's been an area that's been neglected, and we're, I'm looking forward to seeing what the improvement's gonna be. The EPA just, um, gave us the go-ahead, so they can go ahead and start doing the things, putting the walking track, upgrading football, the field, and so children can enjoy aqua at Reed Street. I swam at Reed Street, I skated inside of Reed Street, so I understand, and I would like to see it move.
Thank you, and Mr. Dooley, same question.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I would really like to see improvement to Reed Street, because Reed Street is, is history. Reed Street is our history, most of it, if you, if you live in Wilson, as a black person, you know Reed Street. That's just all there is to it. So to, to improve it is great. Uh, a year, it would have been a year, year and a half ago, we had meetings over at Reed Street where they were talking about the splash pads, and they were gonna put, you know, improve the courts, make a multi-use field and all of that, and, and they, they told us how much money they had for that, that, that project never started. So then you have, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to be negative, but I want people to understand what is really going on. They got the American Rescue Act monies, and that was supposed to have been one point five, no, one point two million dollars for the splash pad at Reed Street. They decided that they wasn't gonna do a splash pad, so where is my one point two million dollars? And why hadn't something else been started with that money? Now you're talking about another million and something in grants to do something there. So now you're looking at, what, almost three million dollars? So three million dollars can do a lot for Reed Street. So first, we've got to make sure we still got that one point two million, right? Then we can figure out the other million, and so they have, what we can do, yes. I, I definitely support, you know, improving Reed Street, because it's needed. I mean, it's just, you, you can't, you, you can't just throw Reed Street away, there's no way. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, when the initial, um, thing was said about the splash pads, coming to enhance the, um, Reed Street, the community did not want that, so we did not put it there, but that's why we don't have the splash pad. And I thought it was a good idea, because you have children doing all kinds of things now, so if, if it's not swimming in the pool, that you splash pad and families can come and do, um, things together, but they didn't want it, so we didn't do it.
And we'll return to Mr. Dooley, so we can continue alternating, because if I get out of order, I'm not gonna know where we are. So my apologies for, for that. This, this is a funny question that I think all our candidates will enjoy. Uh, so the Wilson Times editorial page has described the city council as a rubber stamp for the city manager administration that often approves the staff recommendations without performing its own due diligence. Full disclosure, I am the author of those editorials, and I'm aware the current council members disagree, and that's okay. We can agree to disagree respectfully. Uh, as a candidate for city council, do you feel the council is sometimes too quick to agree with the city staff? How would you approach requests and recommendations from Wilson's manager and leadership team? And we'll start with Mr. Dooley.
Oh, yeah, they, they, they are too quick to, to agree with, with whatever comes down. It's no question to that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, regardless of, of what it is, I, I can't see a council meeting to talk about city business, and it only lasts thirty minutes to include the people that comes and speak. You, it, it, there's no questioning that, so there's no, there's no accountability and there's no, and, and, and there's no transparency. So, no, yeah, I, anything that comes down, if it don't seem right, if it don't smell right, then you have to question it, and it doesn't matter. Going to the city manager, no, no, he, it's, it's ultimately, when you look at the structure, it's supposed to be citizens, mayor council, and manager. So the manager should not have the city as its own playground. So, you know, whatever comes, if it's not right, it should be questioned, whether it, if it goes through or not. You still question it, you just don't let it go, unless it's based on rubber stamp, everything that comes down. Because sometimes things that come down just ain't, you know, in the long run, just ain't gonna be good for you.
Thank you for your response, and Ms. Morgan, do you feel the council is sometimes too quick to agree with the city staff? And how do you approach requests and recommendations from the leadership team?
I don't think we rubber stamp. Um, the city staff, they are experts in what they do, and so if an idea comes through, or a project comes through, or a development is interested in coming to our city, they do the research, they bring it, they do presentations to us all the time. And if it seems like a good investment, think it's good, and we get four votes, we do it, but we are all human. We may not always get it right, but we strive to get it right, and, um, that's the purpose of you all being able to come to city council meetings. You can express yourself, sometimes the meetings last, uh, short enough a time, sometimes they go past eight o'clock or maybe towards eight thirty. But everything that we're going over on the agenda, when they make the, say, when the mayor speaks, he lost half anybody that comes. And then we get through that agenda session part of it, then it open up to the public, and then they get to say their name, address, and then voice their concerns to us.
Thank you for that response, and Mr. Simmons, uh, do you feel the council is too quick to agree with the city staff? And how do you approach recommendations from the manager and leadership team?
Well, you know, I think everything has, you know, takes time, even when you're putting questions and putting things out. So we don't want quick answers, you know, we don't want things to just come back so quickly. And even if the meeting was quick, you know, sometimes I have been there with, you know, some people may say they'll get back to somebody about something. But for the most part, you know, you just wanna be able to get to the right people and, and dissect the questions that are answered about the people. People have the right to, you know, their answers and to even vote for different things, um, to get those collective votes. But, you know, to make it there, um, we don't want to be a yes person, so, you know, I think that's, again, a part of our, you know, administration, is being that council person, that's definitely for the people, and whether it's the city manager's decision or not, you can still, like you said in the beginning, agree to disagree. So, you know, we gotta be able to be for the people first.
Well, thank you for that response, and you receive our next question. Uh, how will you show integrity and transparency in your role as a city councilman?
Integrity, man, that's, that's one of the biggest things to me, and like, you know, I think it's when nobody's looking, you know, it's what you have to do when nobody's around, so that's definitely a part of my everyday, you know, movements, and will be a part of my, you know, council run, because again, we have to show it in order to get it. We have to put that back in the world, because if we got away from it, take a lot of places, I teach my kids every day, I tell them, it's what you're doing when nobody's looking, so that's gonna be a big part of, you know, everybody, I think, I don't care, you know, who's, who's running. Whoever gets it, it should be a part of everybody's, you know, um, office, which is integrity, and when nobody's looking, that's what we're gonna do. So that's gonna be a hundred percent part of, um, what I'm here for, and what I'm here to influence the people, because it's about, again, the integrity, that's gonna help everybody move together collectively, um, in order to grow.
Thank you, and Ms. Morgan, how do you show integrity and transparency in your role as a city councilman?
I was raised to be, to have integrity and honesty and to be accountable for what all that I do and say, whether it- whether it's before the citizens at council meeting on my full-time job, I have twenty-eight years of public service, so that's one of the major things that you have to have to be able to sustain yourself in a type of career that I have on my my full-time job. I'm in and out of agencies where I'm auditing, I have to have integrity, I have to be transparent, I have to be accountable. So I try to blend that into every facet of of my life. So, um, that's not hard for me because I'm already doing that.
Thank you, and the same question, Mr. Do, how would you show integrity and transparency in your roles as councilmen?
Well, the integrity part is 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 pretty easy because if you if you are, or how you was raised, if you was raised correctly, and if you believe in yourself and if you believe in what you're doing, then you're gonna, you you're gonna do the right thing. You're gonna have that integrity, you're gonna have that transparency. But the transparency comes is, and accountability is, for me, as a councilperson, if I was in that scene, on a regular basis, I would have to hold meetings with my district. Because I see things, I do things, but my district, this person has a problem. I don't know what this individual person's problem is. I could have looked, I could have overlooked it. So I'm gonna give everybody in my district an opportunity to at least express themselves. And then from whatever it is, there are some things that you cannot, I can't talk about on the council because, you know. But for anything else, those meetings will be to inform people, to let folks know just what is going on, just how things are going, where they're going, who's doing what, and help them to understand how the process is gonna work. You have to have those meetings in your district. If you don't have those meetings in your district, then how are you gonna represent your district? So for me, representation in my district is is the main thing, that that's, you know, you've got to have that. People have got to know that you are going to let them know everything that's going on. You're not gonna let them begin to talk about things, and they wake up that next day and they got a big bulldozer sitting in front of their house. You're gonna let them know before that time.
Thank you for that response, and Mr. Do will also, uh, receive our next question. How do you feel about term limits? Should we read term limits on the city council?
Yes. I mean, what 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 else can you say? I mean, they say it's up to the voters, people need to vote, have the opportunity to vote. Yes, that's fine. But then you've got to realize, the reality of it is, people vote by what they, by name that they see all the time. They see this person on the council all the time, then okay, yes. So, no, we 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 definitely need term limits. We definitely need term limits. There are term limits, the city has term limits on boards and commissions. So why they don't have term limits on, you know, on on how long they can serve at the council? President can only serve for, you know, eight years. Senate, you know, they they go forever, everything else. But why is it that, especially a small community, why is it that we cannot rotate people in and out on a certain amount of time? That that's the only way, but when you're sitting there for ten, fifteen, twenty years, you get complacent. And when you're complacent, you don't hear nothing about what is going on. You're just concerned about your seat and the power that you want to hold on to. We don't need that, we need those, we need those term limits here, and we need to make sure that they get expressed. And speaking of term limits, boards and commis- commissions, we need to make sure that they follow their own rules. And they're not doing that right now, but we need to make sure they follow those rules.
Thank you for that response, uh, Ms. Morgan, how do you feel about term limits?
Well, I'm probably gonna be biased a little bit on it because, um, I enjoy what I do, but at the end of the day, the voters decide who they want. If you sign, if you, um, file to run and then your name gets on the ballot, then the voters make that decision. And you have to be comfortable and accept whatever the voters say. So if they came up with a term limit, I'd have to abide by the rules because I I try to play by the rules. So, um, to me, um, I don't have a preference, but if something is working, why change it?
Well, thank you for that response, and we'll go, um, to Mr. Simmons, how do you feel about term limits?
Well, you know, sometimes people may not even, no matter what you're doing, you know, some people may not even be doing anything wrong. But again, it's America, you know, this is what we do. Sometimes there are people that can come and do the same things that another person can do, just as better with different eyes. They can see things differently. So, you know, term limits are good, you know. If if you can, again, reapply and do it again, then you get it again. It's all about what you have to offer to people, again, like she stated, the people make the vote. So as long as you give the opportunity for people to come back to the table and regroup and say, we still want what we don't want, I'm all for it, for anything to go.
Thank you, and Mr. Simmons will also receive our next question. Wilson has eighteen boards and commissions whose members are appointed by the city council. But one of these groups stands out from all the others because it's chartered under a nineteen thirteen state law giving cemetery commission broad independence from city government. The Wilson Cemetery Commission hires and manages its own maintenance staff and maintains its own payroll records. No other board or commission in the city does. An audit performed in twenty twenty-one identified financial deficiencies and record-keeping issues. Do you think the cemetery commission should remain independent and autonomous? Or should the city play a greater role in the cemetery management oversight?
And if you can hear that repeated, please.
I'm following. Anytime you got things that are going on and discrepancies come about, you have to go back to the drawing board again. You have to figure it out, take the wrong people out, put the right people back in place. If there are discrepancies, then that's not the people who should be handling it. You have to have the right, the integrity comes back again, what we just talked about. You have to have the right companies in place with the right integrity to serve, especially when it comes to dealing with the taxpaying money. Everything we doing here, no matter who gets to see, is not our money. This money is not to be spent, this is nothing I can do with it. I can do it what's best, have the best integrity and the best vision possible so that the town can grow. Because we, the town's growing, and we wanna grow with it, is why I'm here. So to keep that in mind, is the integrity again, comes back to it.
Well, thank you. Ms. Morgan, do you think the cemetery commission should remain functionally independent from city government? Or should there be more oversight and management there?
There definitely should be more oversight and management, and I, I'm not saying that they have made some, some changes to, um, how they run the cemetery commission. But anything, as as Mr., um, Kamal said, you have to have integrity, you have to have honesty, you gotta have transparency, you gotta have accountability. And when we find out things, we need to act on them.
Thank you, and Mr. Do, the same question, the cemetery commission should be largely independent of city government? Or is there a need for more, uh, greater oversight?
Well, it it needs, it definitely needs more greater oversight. If it's, if the commission is is actually under the city, then the city has a responsibility to make sure that things are done the way it should be done. Uh, I realize that may have been a childhood back in nineteen thirteen or whenever it was. Well, then guess what, times change. What is it that they have not gone back and looked at that and updated that particular thing? They know, back then, it was one thing, you know, it was a whole lot going on, and, you know, it was it was simpler times then. But now, the way things are now, you know, you have to have accountability, you have to have that integrity. So the nation went back and and looked at it and said, okay, we need to change these these laws. We need, we need to change it because it's under the city, so we need to change it and make it sure it's completely under the city so that we can manage and make sure that what they're doing is 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 above ground.
Thank you, and Mr. Do will also, uh, receive our next question. East Wilson residents have to travel across Wilson to reach the post office or a bank. Are we trying to get those businesses back in the area?
Um, yes, of course, I mean, not just, it, it's not about a bank, it's not about a post office. It's about a community that's, that has no quality of life because there is nothing around for them. They have to go all the way across town to eat a decent meal. They have to go all the way across town to to look at a movie, they have to go all the way across town. If I'm at home working on something and I need a boat, I've got to go all the way across town to get a boat to fix what I got to fix. That is part of quality of life, and we over in East Wilson, we don't have that because we have to travel to be able to get what we need. So a bank, a bank is not gonna, no, I can't go to a bank and buy a boat, you know. And now they're doing banking online, I mean, you know, there, there's not a whole lot of brick and mortar banks anymore. There, there are Wells Fargo Bank over there across from Brentwood, they close. You know, because they don't need a brick and mortar no more because people are doing things online. So to bring a bank over there, I'm sure, no. ATM, baby, you know, so people can go grab a dollar, you can do this. But a bank, no, that's, that shouldn't even be in the conversation about a bank. We should be looking at retail stores, we should be looking at restaurants, we should be looking at all kinds of things other than a bank or anything else that's not going to give us what we truly need to, just the basics. We don't need, we don't need basic basics.
Thank you for that response, and we'll ask the same question as Ms. Morgan. Uh, East Wilson residents have to travel across town to reach businesses such as a post office or the bank. Are we trying to get those or other retail businesses back in the area?
Well, I don't think we have any control over what the postal service does. But in regards to, I disagree with Mr., um, Do about a bank because if you're on the three oh one corridor, there's a bank in Kenley and there's one in Shoxworth, so you have all this empty space coming down our corridor. And we have enough businesses, we have enough people. Yes, banks are going to more mobile banking, but we still have people that still go to the bank. They go to the bank to to get their their money orders done, to pay their bills. A lot of things are losing people contact, and and we need to try to get that. And we actually tried to get a bank, we thought that it was going in the right direction. And then when the people at the top decided that no, and like I said, things are going more to to mobile. And, um, also, getting businesses to come to East, to East Wilson on the three oh one corridor is not as easy as it sounds. We've been out, we've advocated, but it's got location, location, location. And East Wilson has been neglected, and West Wilson, the other side of town, looks really, really good. But again, we have a lot of industrial, we have a lot of space on three oh one that could accommodate a business. And the city will give out initiatives, um, incentives, I'm sorry, to to help them, but they have to want to come.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Simmons, uh, same question, what kind of businesses do we need in East Wilson? Is it post office, a bank, retail, and what are we doing to bring those businesses in?
Well, I definitely think a bank is needed, um, post office again, like you said, probably how to reach the government. But, you know, retail businesses, restaurants, you name it, independently owned. Yes, we can get people to come with the big names, but we can do it. People, the people in District One itself, plus the other districts who have thriving businesses, can move them over. There are different things, though, same as Simmons will, will encourage people. It will encourage people to step out on faith. So we have to be behind, stand behind the people, and that's the job of council too, I think. Um, is it one of the most important jobs, is to be there for the people in said district. Is to be that person for them to come and talk to when they wanna open up businesses, when they wanna do different things that they don't know how to do. So sometimes I think people get hit a lot because they just don't have the right people to talk to. And, you know, they may be timid, but when you put yourself out there as this job requires, people should not have a problem coming to you and being able to start things, to be able to get the ball rolling because that's, that's one of the main responsibilities, and that's what the district needs, is the right leader to show them how to start it, to show them how to begin and get the ball rolling.
Well, thank you for that response, and Mr. Simmons will receive our next question. So as a public power community, Wilson operates its own electric departments. Every year, the city council appropriates roughly a quarter million dollars from Wilson and your customers' late fees and moves that to the Community Revitalization Grant Fund, where the money's spent on intergovernmental projects and distributed as grants to nonprofit partners. Is this a proper use of public utility revenue? Should the city reduce or eliminate late fees or continue to collect them and use that fund for a different purpose?
Well, that's a good question, I really think so, and a lot of people really wanna hear that. And I think, you know, it's about the people and where it came from. And so if there are different things, just like sometimes you have, we talk about this all the time, there are programs where people can't pay their bills. There are different things that go on to where people just don't have the resources to always be on track and be on time with these finances and, you know, keeping their lives. So I think the city should definitely, um, be using those type of funds to give back and give back to the people so that it can help some people, can't help everybody, I guess, but if you fit the criteria, you should be able to get help.
Thank you, and the same question to Ms. Morgan. Uh, Community Revival, Revitalization Grant Fund, which I have trouble browsing this evening, is that an appropriate and proper use of utility revenue? Should the city reduce or eliminate late fees or continue to collect that money and use it for other purposes?
I think that we could afford to to tweak that a little. Um, when you, um, have late fees, they come from, well, the city gets their lights, their utilities from from elsewhere. And the bills have to be paid before even people don't pay. So the the ten dollars of the late fee they're going and the way that the money's being distributed, I'm open to it being used in in other avenues.
Well, thank you, and we'll ask the same question as Mr. Do.
Well, the late fees, no, I mean, you said you're using them, you said you're using them what?
Uh, about two hundred fifty thousand dollars every year is moved to the Community, Community Revitalization Grant Fund, and I knew I was gonna butcher that again. Um, it's spent on typically grants to nonprofits and intergovernmental projects like Wilson Paul.
Okay, well, see that, that, there you go. Development is not, when you, when you get down to it and really and truly think about it, you being honest, those late fees come from who? Poor, the poor people in the community, the blacks, to East Wilson. This is where they, this is where they, like, mostly, the majority of these late fees are coming from. And so if they're giving them to nonprofits and to folks that's supposed to be revitalizing, they have not revitalized anything in East Wilson, and that's where the majority of their money's coming from. So, yes, what they need to do is to take that money, stop giving it to these nonprofits, stop giving it to some kind of development thing that they got there, and put it into a fund to help people in East Wilson who cannot afford to pay their life yield this month. What they used to do, they used to go and say, hey, I need help. Funds have ran out. No, that that that's a number of happen. There's no reason in this city that anybody, even if they're late on their life bills, that their life should be cut off. There's no reason for that. When the city has all of this money that they're gaining from late fees, those late fees could be used to help folks that have paying those late fees to keep their lives.
Thank you for the response, um, our next question. What do you see as the most urgent issue facing citizens in your district?
The most urgent, most urgent issue? Oh, crime, drug addiction, mental health, I mean, pick one. You know, it's 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 there, it's a lot there that is going on in in our district. So you can't just say the most. There is no most, you know, when when it comes to that. It's just issues that need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed, and they need to be addressed, you know. Yesterday, they, it it does, there's no programs in place. We don't have a rehabilitation center as such, other than at the hospital, I think they've got one there, or they have some mental health places, you know, offices here and there. But they need a true rehabilitation center here in Wilson because there is a big drug addiction problem. People are ODing every day, you know. So, yeah, I mean, I can't say that's the biggest thing, you know. Folks are being put out, rent's going up, people have the rent, it's going up. So they are putting their stuff in storage and moving in for somebody else, so they're just almost homeless. So I mean, I don't, I don't know what would be the one single most important thing.
Well, thank you for that response, and Ms. Morgan, what do you see is the most urgent issue facing citizens in your district?
I agree with Mr. Do, there is a list of things, like he said, that you have the drugs, you have the homelessness, you have, um, problems with affordable housing, people are not even paying their bills. We can't control rent, um, the rent is set by whoever owns the, um, development or wherever it is. And we've had people, I had people call me all throughout the last past year because their rent has gone up. I feel like the people are being punished because of moratorium that we had during the COVID, the pandemic. And then when they lived it and the people were behind on their bills, then they figured a way to to up the the rent. That's something we can't control, and I, and I hope that in the future, that some programs can be put in place to assist. That's something we can't control. And I, and I hope that in the future, that some programs can be put in place to assist. But we can't guarantee it because there's so many things going on, like he said, that, that need attention. And then we have to partner with the county because when it comes down to your mental health and your hospitals, that's county.
Well, thank you. That was illuminated. And we will ask the same question of Mr. Simmons. What do you see as the most urgent issue facing citizens in your district?
I think everything they named above, definitely the drugs, you know, definitely the arrangements and different situations. I think one of the biggest things is the youth. We need to definitely empower and get the youth going so that they can grow to be the people who we are, who we want them to be, and the people that can run the town. And the people that can get the bigger jobs, can get the better jobs. We train them. We gotta start with the youth now. Because we are there. And, and again, we're not going anywhere, but we have to put it back down. That's that ladder standing back down for the youth so that they're able to take care of us, so that they're able to understand that they need to do that. We bring the programs in and the different things to show them how they can thrive on a higher level, they will. And we will produce higher level people to live in District One. We have to produce people that are gonna think different, that are gonna be thinking on a higher level so that we can all grow together and we can actually perform together. But I think nowadays, people always so stuck and just being and worrying about what's in their house, what's in their house. We have to get back to what's in the neighbor's house. And not in a bad way, but in a good way. We teach him what I know. Oh, I did this. I, I fixed my house and got this phone. You show him how to do it. So again, that's how we do it. We teach the youth how to, how to, I think, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Simmons also gets our next question. Uh, if elected, what's the biggest goal you hope to accomplish in your first year on city council?
Biggest goal, you know, is to, I think, get the people to understand that, you know, things can be done. And there are issues that are right, right at the forefront. And some are simple, some are big. So, you know, the, the first thing would be to definitely in District One, should not stay at houses. Give people that information for theirs, show them how to fix it, show them how to financially, if someone got will something, they don't know what to do with it. You know, give people the information they need is, is the first line of defense. So I think the goal, you know, we want that for District, you know, the board.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, if reelected, what's the biggest goal you hope to accomplish in your first year of your second term?
Communication, communication is key because if people don't have the tools that they need to, to grow and move, as Mr. Kamal said, that it is important. But there are programs out there that geared towards literacy, financial literacy. And we have an education, we have to push for education. When I used to work in social services, one of the biggest things that I, I pushed for my clients to keep, keep moving, keep growing. You don't have to go to college, but you can fit, go to Wilson Tech, get your trade. And then we wanna have things here that people would wanna stay, that are youth, that when they grow up and go to college, they'll come back. And if we don't have the right jobs here for them or high paying jobs here for them, they're gonna go elsewhere.
Thank you. And Mr. Dew, if elected, what's the biggest goal you hope to accomplish in your first year in office?
In, in my first year in office, the biggest goal I hope to accomplish is to get these blighted vacant lots to use, put, put them to use. I mean, you know, that, we, we can build, they used to have Habitat, where you mentioned, that built houses and stuff. Uh, I haven't seen them build any houses. I don't know why. I haven't seen them lately. Not saying that they're not building them, but the, the main thing is gonna be to, to make sure that people have a decent, affordable place to live. You know, that's just, I mean, that, that, that's where it all started. If you don't live in a decent place, if you don't live in a neighborhood that's, that's decent, and I mean, and you got all this stuff running around in your neighborhood, what do you expect to come out of that neighborhood? So, you know, we just need to fix that neighborhood, we need to fix all the vacant lots, we need to put them to use. We need to put houses in them for the homeless, we need to put houses in them for the, for the extra poor. Kind of street project is not gonna do it for us. So we need to, you know, first year is gonna be, it's gonna be affordable housing and homelessness.
Well, thank you for that response. Uh, we have just about reached the end of our scheduled time for today's candidate forum. But before we adjourn, we will give each candidate, uh, two minutes to make a closing statement to the voters here in the audience and watching at home. And we'll continue alternating and start with Mr. Dew. My closing statement to the voters in District One.
Okay, my, my closing statement would be, I operate a lot of times with no filter. I talk about what I see, what I feel. Because if you don't do that, then you are not the person that you think you are. You have to be who you are. That's just all there is to it. You cannot allow anybody to tell you who you are. And for me, working in District One is because it's a, it's a predominantly black district. Working for the people in District One, then that is the way I'm gonna have to go. I'm gonna have to look at any program, any things that's gonna help the minority. There are plenty of programs out there. But the thing about it is, is are we willing to look for those programs? You know, there's things that can be done. That's what I, those, those are the things I have to do, you know? I, I, I've gotta go places. I've seen a lot of people, I know a lot of things that's going on in other places. Those things, some of those things can work here in Wilson. But the thing about it is, you have to be willing to go and bring those programs here. You can't just say, okay, this is, this will work here. Bring it up, mention it, and then leave it alone. That, too much of that has gone on in the city already. So we need to stop that. We need, if we find something that we know will work within the city, then we need to do that regardless. That's, that, that's just, that's just it. There's no other way around it. So the only way we're gonna get this city to thriving is to fix one side of town that's broken. The other side of town is running. So the broken part has to be addressed. You cannot just not, not address it. You gotta address it. If you don't, then it's not the one Wilson. No such thing as one Wilson. You're not gonna address that. It's not gonna happen.
Thank you, Mr. Dew. Uh, Ms. Morgan, what is your closing statement to the voters in District One?
My closing statement is that I'm not about the spotlight, I am about action. Um, also, I'm about handling the business of District One, their concerns, their issues. They bring them to me, I don't have a problem working on them. And I've worked hard for the last past four years to do that. And that is why they elected me for the last, let, let, elected me for this, this, this term. And I've done my best of my ability. And I will continue to do so if I'm reelected, reelected. And I humbly ask for the vote for you to reelect me another four years. And if, if not, then the next person would pick up the baton and move forward. And I thank you all for spending your evening with me.
Well, we thank you for spending your evening with us as well. And we'll ask the same question of Mr. Simmons. So your closing statement to the voters here in Wilson City Council, District One?
First off, the main reason I'm running is for the community. I am a pillar. I have been a part of this community. So I was able to actually get a inside run, y'all. For the past five years, um, I was able to not just groom the people and, and groom them, but to actually get inside their heads and inside their lives. It actually allowed me also to get inside the town, being on different boards, Wilson Downtown Development Corporation, doing different things that people sought me for, for me opening my business. You know, they came and said, Mel, we want you to be on our board, we want you to serve. And we all knows what that means. That's value. So again, I'm able to bring value back to our culture, back to different things that we got lost. So people are recognizing, you know, the younger people like me, like other people, that we are really standing up because we are. And I'm really taking the stand with, you know, running because it's for the people and it's for the people, you know? And everything that I, um, I'm able to accomplish on this journey, I'm so proud of, you know? So it led me to you guys. It led me to this seat tonight with, um, you know, being here and, and being able to run. It's not anything that I can take lightly, you know? I definitely take this, you know, with pride. And I have been, and I've been running the Avenue campaign, and I appreciate any and everybody for their support. And I wanna thank each and every one of you tonight again for coming out. And, um, I want you guys to vote different. And when I say vote different, it's not about what's on the outside. We all can put suits on, we all can put things on and dress up, but it's what's on the inside that counts. It's what we do again when nobody's watching. So in order for me to be here, I had to do a lot of things, y'all, when nobody was watching. I had to stay focused, I had to stay on point so that I can achieve and I can, you know, persevere also. So I wanna be able to give that back, you know, the best way I can. And able to do more, I have to climb higher. And that's what I'm doing. I'm gonna get higher so that we keep a ladder down for people who can't reach up.
Well, thank you, sir. Right at the buzzer. Um, I'd like to thank all three of our candidates for participating this evening. Uh, and thank everyone for attending and watching on YouTube. Uh, please join us next week, right here, seven o'clock, the City of Wilson Mayor Candidate Forum. Uh, following week, October nineteenth, is St. Petersburg Town Council. And we will conclude on October twenty sixth with City Council, District Two and District Four.